Okay, it is 6:00 PM on Monday, May 5th. I'm going to call to order the Liquor Control Board meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Thomas Renner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, Jenny.
So this is a renewal of a restaurant application and staff has no concerns.
Great. Pho dang Vietnamese cafe on here. Any questions from council? Any questions from members of the public?
Oh, just a comment. Apparently pho dong is closer to the actual pronunciation.
Pho dong.
It is also not right, but a little bit closer.
Thank you. I've been eating there for years. Okay. Seeing no concerns, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Thomas, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved. Thank you, Jenny. That's the end of our Liquor Control Board meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Thomas, second by Bryn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That meeting is adjourned. Thank you. So it's 6:01 and I will call to order the Winuski City Council. First up is Agenda Review. I want to propose a change we have on here under Consent, Item J, a resolution recognizing the Waking Windows Music Festival. The organizers are able to attend the next meeting, so I want to bump it to that agenda.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to make any changes this evening? Okay. That brings us to Public Comments. This is space reserved for items not on the evening's agenda. If you're here for an item that's on tonight's agenda, would ask you to wait for that item. We do have public comment time for each of those. I believe Wesley, you have public comment for us, so please come up. Yes, thank you. Please introduce yourself and then speak your piece.
My name is Leslie Frye and I'm here to ask when attention will be paid to Elm Street. I've lived at 48 Elm Street for 34 years and it's only in the last three years that oversized truck traffic has been so bad that I have been emailing the Chief of Police and City Manager over those past few years. A couple of those messages were also copied to the mayor and members of the council. Briefly, there is a sign at the top of the steep Elm Street Hill that no trucks over 24,000 pounds are allowed and signs for the truck route, which is on Pine Street, one block further on Mallett's Bay Avenue. Most trucks ignore those signs. The police have been educating the businesses and the warehouses at the end of Elm Street, which initially created some improvement, except for the line of trucks called Final Mile. I won't take up your time going through the actions I've personally taken to address the situation. I'm here to bring the issue to light in person rather than through email. So I have three points, further points. When large semi trucks do take the truck route, they have a hard time turning the corner at West Street back onto Elm Street and have caused damage and disruption to homeowners there. Is there anything in the land records from when the warehouses were built that says anything about the weight, height, width, length limits for trucks? Second point is, in 2001, there was an engineering study for traffic calming areas that included Elm and West Streets with solutions like chicane's or speed humps. Will those recommendations ever be acted upon? Reminder that large trucks screech on their brakes at the foot of the steep Elm Street Hill, then rev up and speed along the remainder of the street, creating noise, exhaust, vibrations, and danger. And finally, we Elm Streeters feel invisible. Around last July, the Elm Street sign on Mallett's Bay Avenue went missing and still has not been replaced, something else that I have emailed about. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? If you're on Zoom, you can use chat or raise hand feature. Okay. We will move on to our Consent Agenda. So we have a number of items. We have our City Council and Liquor Control Board Meeting Minutes from April 21st, the Payroll Warrant and Accounts Payable Warrants, Winuski Armory Redevelopment Project Request for Congressional directed Spending, a National League of Cities Advancing Economic Mobility Rapid Grant, the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Resolution, the Jewish American Heritage Month Resolution, Older Americans Month Resolution, and Mental Health Awareness Month Resolution, and the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission Planning Advisory Committee Appointments. Are there any questions or concerns about Consent Agenda tonight? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Charlie?
Second.
Second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We are on to Council Reports. Charlie, would you like to kick us off?
I have no updates at this moment.
Great. Thomas?
Sure. So a while ago at this point, as I wasn't able to attend our last meeting, Winuski Partnership for Prevention came to Safe, Healthy, Connected People to talk about their 2024 Annual Report. You can find that on their website, winuskiprevention.org. But one, maybe the big takeaway is although Vermont has a high, Vermont youth have a high use compared to the rest of the nation of alcohol, cigarettes, and marijuana, Winuski is actually below the Vermont average. So really exciting to hear, obviously for a lot of reasons. But it was interesting because that's usually not what you see in other states. Because we are a city and there were easy access into where people can buy cigarettes and alcohol and things like that. Usually that actually leads to higher rates of youth using those substances. So a lot of work's been done with the school to kind of bring that down. But again, the full report is right on their main page, winuskiprevention.org. And then last week, Downtown Winuski met and they mainly spoke about the vote that council took. And they again wanted to just thank council, thank the city manager for all of the work that went into it and then for the discussions that we had and voting to approve that budget item for them. On a personal note, I could just tell that there was a lot more ease in this most recent meeting. They were able to really focus on the actual work that they want to do instead of having something hang over them. With that, two big events are coming up in this summer that I wanted to start to put on folks' calendars. So Juneteenth will be June 20th from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then our Pride Celebration will be September 13th, also from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. The next Safe, Healthy, Connected People Meeting will be next Tuesday, the 13th. For members of the public who are interested in attending, that's at 5:30 at the O'Brien Community Center.
Thank you. Big thanks to staff and volunteers for coordinating Green Up Day. Our Housing and Planning Commissions had a joint meeting where the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission presented future land use map drafts and draft housing targets. So these are part of direction of Act 181 from the state legislature. The future land use map, what's being proposed, pretty well matches our current zoning and uses. The draft housing targets range from a low number that matches the current rate of production to a high number. That would mean a more than 50% increase in housing units by 2050. The commissions were more supportive of a middle ground number that would lead to positive impact on the housing market without overwhelming our city's infrastructure and services. These targets are still, the target and the draft land use map are still open for public comment and will eventually make their way here to the council. And I also want to call out that the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission did recognize that for the past five years, Winuski has produced more housing per capita than any other Chittenden County town, thanks to a lot of work from the city. The Planning Commission, I think, meets this Thursday?
Yep.
Okay. This Thursday, 6:30 PM, here in council chambers or via Zoom. And then Finance Commission's next meeting is Tuesday, next Tuesday, May 15th, 6:00 PM, council chambers or via Zoom. Thank you. Bryn?
Thanks. Again, just want to extend my thanks and appreciation for anybody that greened up on Green Up Day or before or are continuing to do so afterwards. There was a little bit of rain, a little bit of liquid sunshine, but didn't dampen the vibe of the day too much. So thanks for everybody that got out. Congratulations also to the organizers and all the performers for Waking Windows, all the businesses involved on their 15th and final year running. So we will miss that event, that annual event, and I know many others will as well. The next Infrastructure Commission meeting will be scheduled for May 14th. Yes, May 14th. So that's moving it up a day because we will have our strategies and priorities retrieved for council during our regularly scheduled meeting. So we'll be announcing the agenda later this week or by Monday, I think, at the latest. So to be continued on that. That's what I got.
Sorry, can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I'm sure many folks saw in the news the rather large fire that occurred on Lion Kiln just kind of past the Winuski border. Lots of fire departments responded, but I know that the Winuski Fire Department also responded. And it was, from what I heard from folks, a really intense and quite dangerous fire. So as we recognized our first responders officially recently, I just wanted to also do another shout out to the folks who responded to that fire. I know it was quite intense.
Thank you for that, Thomas.
Yeah.
We'll move on to City Updates. Elaine?
Yes, the Department of Public Works began work on a stormwater infrastructure inventory and mapping project today. This work will take two to three weeks to complete with an estimated end date of May 30. Work will occur Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM in the following areas. Mayo Street to the west, Abenaki Way to the east, Platt Street to the north, and the Winuski River to the south. Public Works and our project partners will require access to stormwater catch basins and manholes, resulting in temporary parking restrictions at the access points prior to and during work performed. For full details, please visit the News Update section of our website at winuskiVT.gov. Spring is here. Weather sometimes not the same. And blood donations are needed. Did you know that in the six hours it takes an average person to spring clean, 10,800 units of blood may be transfused to patients? Please help save a life and schedule your appointment today for the blood drive at the Senior Center on Friday, May 16th, from 12:00 PM to 4:30 PM. To schedule, you can visit the News Update section of our website, winuskiVT.gov, or call 1-800-RED-CROSS. As members of council have already said, the beloved Waking Windows Music Festival has sadly come to a close this year with one last amazing event for residents and visitors at their May 19th council meeting?
Yes.
City Council will review a celebratory resolution recognizing the organizers of Waking Windows, their contributions. Please keep an eye out for this on our social media channels sometime after that meeting. And you can show up at the May 19th meeting if you want to help celebrate the organizers. I do want to thank the core team of organizers and the many community volunteers for making the final event such a success. And second, also to echo council, speaking of beloved community traditions, many thanks to the many volunteers who made Green Up a success in Winuski. If you still have Green Up Day bags that need to be picked up, please call us at City Hall at 802-655-6410 and let us know. That's all.
Thank you, Elaine. Okay. We'll move into our regular items. First up for discussion is the fiscal year 2025 Quarter 3 Treasurer's Financial Reports. Welcome, Johnny.
Just made it in nick of time.
You did. I was thinking.
Good evening, council. First, I want to say I had a great time at Waking Windows this past weekend. That's great. Thanks for hosting, hosting it. So I'm here to report the FY '25 Q3 Treasurer's Financial Report. Just some highlights. So again, this is for Q3, so ending, so based on activity ending March 31st. So based on Q3 financial activity, the City's General Fund is forecasting an annual surplus of .1 million with a net fund balance of 2.7 million, which is about a 4% increase year over year. For reference, the previous fiscal year's ending net fund balance was 2.6 million. So it's just an increase of .1 year over year. General Fund revenues are forecasted to total 11.3 million, about 330 K above budget. The city's main driver of revenue collection, property tax, is estimated to account for about 8.1 million of revenue for the city this fiscal year and is forecasted to be at .2 under budget. This dip in property tax revenue is due to appeals to property evaluations set by the assessor, which accounted for this past quarter. This dip in predicted revenue will most likely be offset by the city's investment income. Like FY '24, we predict that external factors in the market will be a major contributor to our growth in net assets. Rising interest rates accounted for .37 million in revenue via, earned last fiscal year. General Fund expenses, conversely, is forecasted to be at 11.2 million and over budget by .2 million. Like FY '24, there are cost savings due to staff vacancies across multiple departments. Staff vacancies reduced the forecasted salary fringe and other employee-related expenses. However, forecasted cost savings from staff vacancies will decrease and have decreased throughout the year as positions were filled. Our police department, so update there. Our police department has had multiple open positions due to turnover over the past nine months and the department currently has two open positions. Conversely, a new fire chief has been hired or so far. Overall, the number of staff vacancies across multiple departments continues to decrease, which contributes to rising expense forecasts in Q3. Just to kind of wrap it up. Overall, the modest gain projected in the city's general fund is expected to be offset by more substantial fund losses across multiple enterprise funds, which will be further mitigated by debt proceeds, particularly the parking fund. This financial, these financial impacts are largely tied to two major infrastructure improvement projects currently in progress. For example, the Water and Wastewater Fund is experiencing short-term losses due to the ongoing Main Street revitalization project, which remains on schedule and is expected to be completed by mid-2026. Similarly, the Combined Parking Garage Fund is being affected by the construction of an Abenaki Garage, a project that is nearing completion. Continue monitoring of the Abenaki Garage's progress is recommended. Looking ahead, the city should also be preparing for future expenditures related to long-term, other long-term capital projects, potentially including the construction of the new Winuski Bridge, which I don't know if there's a budget set for that or how that will be accounted for or predicted. Construction of the bridge is currently, I believe, is currently projected to begin in 2027 and concluded by 2030. Any questions for me? That's all I had.
Just a quick clarification. It was the fire inspector that got hired.
Fire inspector, yeah, sorry about that.
Unless John quit and then didn't tell.
Fire inspector, sorry about that, yes. I'll have to update this.
Any questions from council? No surprises, thank goodness.
Right, exactly.
All right. Well, thank you for staying on top of it.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night, guys.
You too. Okay. Moving on to Item B. This is on for discussion or approval. The overview and introduction of amendments to the Unified Land Use and Development Regulations for Transportation Demand Management.
Trying to figure out where to start. So I guess I can start with the purpose of it. So the Planning Commission has been working on changing regulations under Section, Article 4, Section 4.12, to encourage non-private vehicle use, ease congestion, reduce greenhouse gases through encouraging and incentivizing other modes of transportation. So with the Transportation Demand Management section that would be required for larger developments, this would require applicants to include some sort of non-private vehicle travel mode program incentive to encourage other ways of moving in and around the city and outside of the city. With this too, there is a goal of reducing, at the basic level, trip ends by 10% from sites. And with this too, there is a trade-off of offering parking reductions for including a program or incentive or amenity that would encourage non-private vehicle travel. I was thinking, I'm sure all of you have questions. I received some questions beforehand. I figured it might be helpful just to go through it, like in generally, section by section and some of my thought process in terms of, and the Planning Commission's thought process in terms of how they came up with some of this language. I think that might help with understanding what's the basis for a lot of these numbers and the intent of the language itself. So with the applicability, it mainly applies to 20 dwelling units and/or 5,000 square feet of commercial space. The idea behind this was to require this for larger developments and then trying to find that equivalency in terms of trip ends and for residential uses and commercial uses. And that's where that equivalency comes from with 5,000 square feet and 20 dwelling units. It's a little imprecise, but that's, based on IT or Generation manuals, that's where we concluded upon for that equivalency. And then there are different tiers based on the density and intensity of the use into these three project tiers. Ideally, we'd want to encourage higher reductions in trip ends with larger projects with higher intensity. So they would be required to put in more amenities or programs or incentives into the system in order to encourage reductions in trips. Let's see, with requirements. It's very similar to what's in the zoning right now in terms of TDM plan, showing what the applicant intends to do, how the applicant intends to meet that objective of 10%, 12%, 14% reduction, where existing amenities are in terms of bus stops, car share Vermont sites, and then working from there and working with the applicant to ensure that they can meet that goal and moving to, and move towards that goal over time. The last part that's included in here is a letter from GMT indicating that they have reviewed the project. So GMT, through multiple interactions with them, they want to know where major projects are happening in general so that way they can plan services for the future. So even without TDM, they want to have communication with us so that way they can plan proactively. Going down now, going through the streeting strategies. There is a required strategy of the marketing and then a range of options that applicants can choose from. With the TDM strategies, it's kind of, I'll admit, an imprecise science trying to negotiate whether the options would reduce trips, whether the options fit within the Winuski community context, whether certain options are what the city is looking to incentivize and wants to promote in the future, and then trying to balance it out. So I referred to a number of different documents when I was doing the research for this. A lot of them come from larger cities. Larger cities are the ones that have TDM programs. With exception to California, California requires it statewide and all other municipalities. So there are some smaller models, but it still ends up being a very similar framework. And then Vtrans also did a white paper back in 2017 that outlines what are TDM strategies? How do they work? And how would it work towards trip reductions? So they have a rough guideline for different options and trip reductions. Some of those reference documents are more specific than others. Of course, a lot of those reference documents have different weights and different values. And then looking at nearby communities too. Burlington's in the process of setting up a TDM ordinance. They've been in the process for over a year now, working with a consultant on that. South Burlington has a TDM, a very, a pretty robust TDM section in their zoning too. So I've had multiple conversations with those planners as well in developing this to make sure that we're all on the same page with strategies and common goals. So with that, some of the points, I think, can be negotiated based off of our conversations. But just because I think there are the trip reduction aspects, there are the cost aspects. But there's also what does the community want to incentivize at the end of the day? And should we put in more points towards those elements that the community finds intrinsically valuable or the community just wants to have at the end of the day? So with the marketing, I think, received a question about this. The two points, it's, it's pretty standard in TDM ordinances that I've read to value marketing at one point or two points. The actual trip reduction can really vary. It's kind of like signs, right? Like if there's too many signs, you might become blind to the signs itself. So we concluded on two points for the marketing as a baseline. Of course, that can, that can always be adjusted through conversation, but based off of the reference documents and in terms of ease of putting out the marketing and ease of developing the marketing, that's something that we concluded that two points would be the justified value for. And then the values go straight down from there. Bicycle repair station, short-term bicycle parking. One point for a 2% trip reduction. That shows up pretty universal across a bunch of different reference documents that I saw in terms of how much bike parking you have and how that leads to certain behaviors based on conclusions. And then with additional accessory uses, including accessory uses reduces trip ends because then you don't have to take your car to go to the gym or take your car to go run errands. I think there's a question about maybe breaking that out a bit further with specific uses. That's totally doable too. Different TDM ordinances break this out into accessory uses as a single point category and then secondary uses or additional uses as another point category. In Boston uniquely, they have a baseline point allowance for these accessory uses like fitness centers and then a much higher point value for childcare centers. So that too can also be teased out, negotiated based off of the community needs and what the community wants to incentivize. GMT ride credits. This is the big question. I've had a lot of conversations with their planners over the last couple of months and trying to figure this out. We don't have a universal model for distributing points because their agreements can really range with different employers, different institutions. So with some organizations, they have, or some developments they have, the applicant offers half discount on ride credits. Some offer a full discount on ride credits. Some offer a 25% discount on ride credits. And then GMT also differs based off of whether this is based off of the ride cap per day because they have like a $50 cap per month or if it just is money that they throw into their GMT ride credit wallet and then it just gets distributed and allocated accordingly. So based off of all the different types of agreements GMT has, the GMT planners and I have been trying to figure out, how do we put this into a spreadsheet that can just be handed to the applicant and say, hey, if you do this, then you'll get X amount of points? We're still figuring that out and I think I'll probably meet with them again just to figure out more details. But we've had great conversations so far on trying to just lay it out into something that's legible, readable, and accessible. So that way, when you read this and it just says one to eight points and you just shrug your shoulders, I can hand over a spreadsheet that says, if you do X, then you will get X amount of points at the end of the day. And I want to hopefully have that for you for the public meeting so that way you have that as a guide. We have, I have a draft right now, but after some conversations that I've had with GMT, I need to refine that a bit more before it's ready. Refining signage, real-time transit display. Again, this is pretty universal across the board in all the guidance documents that I've seen that at a very baseline, basic baseline level, that offers a small trip reduction. Improvements to GMT bus stops, car share, e-bike and micro mobility device charging. Again, very, very much general across the board with those point values too. Now, a TMA membership. This one was also pretty tricky just because it can range depending on the arrangement that you have with Transportation Management Association like CATMA. Depending on how much a, an organization, institution puts into CATMA, depending on the goals that CATMA sets. I, when crafting this, I was looking to make this, trying to make it like a blanket, all-inclusive. Like if you have an agreement with CATMA, on that agreement with CATMA, they will list the strategies. And so that agreement would show how many, how many trips that would reduce. So the point value would be based on how many trips that agreement with CATMA would reduce, whether it's 10%, 12%, 14% trip reduction based on whatever is in that agreement text with CATMA. Whether it's a ten percent, twelve percent, fourteen percent trip reduction, based on whatever is in that agreement text with CATMA.
Revi, before you can you can you give a three-sentence introduction to CATMA, please?
CATMA is the, what is it? Catamount Area Transportation Management Association, if I remember the acronym correctly. They offer transportation management solutions, which is not helpful in the definition, but transportation management solutions for institutions, companies, developers that are looking to figure out basically how to connect employers, residents to where they want to be if without using private vehicles. So they will coordinate van pools, car share. They will coordinate with GMT on working on the discounts. They have programs to provide wellness, like wellness-type discounts if you commute by bu- by bike or by bus. So they are basically like the people who could do the hands-on management of this this type of ordinance. So if a developer and employer was like, I don't know where to start and I don't know where to go with this, CATMA would be able to to just take it in and and set up a strategy and program and and hand it off to to them, to to help them, guide them, guide the applicant through those ordinance essentially. Is that a good summary? Okay. Yeah, so innovation and then that again, providing some sort of flexibility, leniency, if there's something that an applicant wants to do that's not listed, that's something that we could evaluate and determine based on how effective the the strategy could be. Unbundling parking, this one is a bit of, I think, on, so this one on its face is actually aligns with what reference documents typically say on how much of a trip reduction this can lead to. That unbundling parking can lead to a significant trip reduction on sites and that's something that's highly encouraged. I think there was a question about the equity aspect of unbundling parking that removing it from, decoupling it from rent could leave people stranded. I think, I think Bryn, as you suggested, maybe there could be some sort of language that says that if you're going to unbundle parking, you need to be near a bus stop, a bus stop or show accessibility to a bus stop or through other transportation modes. I think something like that could be easily included and arranged in this. Overall, just going one step back, with this understanding that Winuski really only has bus transit on its corridors and for the most part, to a limited extent. That's where we tried to focus in with this with this ordinance was to show that there are transportation options readily available, that you don't need to to walk twenty-five minutes to a bus stop in order to meet this requirement really. So so with the with the unbundling parking too, that was the idea as well is to make sure that there are other transportation modes nearby in order to make that even physically possible in the Winuski community. But again, an additional requirement like that could be easily included in this. Showers and clothes lockers, another question that that I received from Bryn, it's it it is kind of a strange text that provision of at least one shower and six clothes lockers on a site for every fifty employees. It it sounded rational, it comes straight from the existing zoning, so I did not draft it. When I was doing a little bit of research with this, there's no real general guidance on how many showers and how many lockers should be provided. If you look at the, and in the Vtrans white paper, it says providing showers and bike lockers can lead to a one percent trip reduction, but doesn't say how many and to what extent. The only other reference document that I saw that actually had a like an actual standard, like a district standard, was from San Francisco's that said that for every thirty bike racks, there should be at least one shower. And and so however you want to parse that out, when I was doing the math in my head, fifty employees and thirty bike racks end up including at least one shower for for most businesses in most cases, so that number could be more, could be more specified or more discreet if if you'd like to include like all workers or or base it off of bike racks as San Francisco has. And then bicycle mobility fleet, so if you provide e-bikes, e-scooters, there's a trip production. And then parking cash out, again, very similar to unbundling parking, but on the employee side. That also significantly reduces trips onsite. And then I think, let's see, parking reductions. So that any applicant that does, that will include TDM would get a significant parking reduction. This is basically the planning commission and my way to negotiate what input we heard from the developers' roundtable with with these amenities. That from the developers' roundtable, almost all the developers told us that they wanted significant parking reductions or no parking requirements. So we kind of tried to figure out a way that would reduce that parking burden, but also provide back to the residents and employees that they have other options to move about. So so that's that's the trade-off that we concluded at. Then monitoring and evaluation. My, the way that I see this is that I would want to collect on a, every two years, information about how the TDM plan is going, but I'm I'm very well aware that this is kind of our our first stab at this. And I know that down the line, I'll have to probably talk to CCRPC about whether this is working and whether there needs to be any adjustments, changes to make this work better for the city. But as a starting point, this is this is the baseline essentially. I also have a form, a draft form for that too, that I'd be happy to share with you. This one I'll turn over to you for any questions.
You want to start?
I mean, I I think you covered a lot of my questions through your presentation. I honestly want to start by saying I I think it's, the revisions are really great overall in that my comments really are kind of getting at the tweaking here and there. But generally speaking, I think these revisions are are in line with things that I've shared and have heard others shared. So I think some of it is like wanting more transparency and more predictability and where it makes sense to do that. On the ride credits, which I think I was confusing with, one of my later requests was to ensure that there was basically reintroducing the option to get points for providing just fares for a year for tenants or subsidized fares for tenants. And that they would basically cover the, the property manager would cover the, or the property owner would cover the remainder of the balance kind of thing, but I think that's what, ride credits?
That's what the ride credits are.
Are?
Yep.
I don't know. When I was, I had access to subsidized fares and it basically was just a reduced rate, like punch card, so that's kind of what was in my head when I was coming to.
Yeah, they have a new system at GMT, so instead employers, property owners can directly deposit into their ride credit wallet system and then it gets distributed out.
Yeah, that makes that makes more sense. I'm so antiquated. So I think to the extent that we can improve some predictability and transparency for the ride credits, maybe it is having that flexibility of having a separate document. That gives a ability to to at least have something that you can point to, but also the flexibility of like being able to update that as as needed over time. So a little less restrictive than this format. I, you you didn't, you sort of answered the the question. As far as the the lockers, whatever, for the commercial projects, does, would that be inclusive? So the Mill Building has a number of businesses in there. So it's looking at one business or is a combination of all businesses?
It would be a combination of all businesses.
Okay. I don't know that that was entirely clear when I was reading through this.
Okay.
So wanting to have the ability to encompass more. I would advocate that it it might make sense to modify to to a bike rack since that is a component for new construction developments in this section. You know, in the above section for bike parking requirements. So that may make sense, but I defer to you if that would be applicable in all cases, so. If not, then maybe keep it as is, but if if it does make sense to tie it back to the bike parking above, then maybe we make that adjustment. Let me see the other big points. Would there be a way to have some type of acknowledgement? I know this is a stretch, but go with me. Go with me on this journey for a short second. For the marketing component, I just, the subjectivity of like what is marketing feels very squishy to me. And it's fine if you want to keep it at two points, but I would want to have maybe a little bit more accountability of what that is, what that looks like and what is like baseline reasonable for meeting that requirement. When I was looking at buying my home in Winuski, I had to sign a document acknowledging about the the basing of the F thirty-fives. I don't know if there's a means to have some type of acknowledgement of like, and these are your transportation options as you move into like and move in or, you know, occupy the space. Just as a way to be like, even if it's like nineties marketing, we can still say at least there was acknowledgement.
Are you saying for like the the building owner needs to track that these new employees or tenants acknowledged receipt? To like prove that they distributed it?
More or less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a bit tricky.
I I agree and I also, in in absence of that, I would just want to have a little bit more specificity around like what is baseline marketing for our standards and expectations? Because that can be a really wide range. I think generally speaking, again, I I don't have any concerns. I don't really have like significant concerns or anything that I feel like strongly needs to be removed or adjusted. So I just want to say thanks for the work that you've done to put into this and the additional research to prepare for my questions.
Okay, I heard three things here. One is adding language to clarify the shower locker situation that it serves all businesses in the building. How do you, folks agree with that? Yeah, okay. The second is considering if that number is tied to bike racks versus number of employees. And I think what I heard is you would defer to best judgment. We're good with that? Okay. And then how about this marketing requirement? Do we want Revi to look into that more? I hear an ask from you and you saying that might be challenging, so I think the request would be, is there some way that you could add more accountability?
Yeah, I'll look into it, but it seems pretty challenging on a, speaking very generally, just because I I haven't had any experience with doing that and I haven't seen that in any zoning that would require that type of contractual acknowledgement for every new tenant, new employee that would come in. I think it'd be trickier to, I think it'd be trickier, but at the same time, interesting to to monitor and evaluate, because then you actually have fiscal like information that shows that these are all the people that have acknowledged that they're, that this, that these amenities are present and therefore, and then derived from there, this is how much usage there has been, so.
Bryn, don't make too much work for yourself.
It doesn't have to be the only, I did propose like two options here, like either having a little bit more specificity of what baseline looks like or having some type of acknowledgement.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I'll look into it.
Do other counselors have questions? Or thoughts to share?
Thought question, I was, first, thank you for all of the work, thank you for answering the questions. Bryn, thank you for asking the questions. You mentioned a few times that you've spoken with GMT. I was wondering, have you spoken with Car Share Vermont at all? I know from some family members who live in town and some residents who live in town that they'd like, they don't own vehicles, they'd like to partake in car share, but the locations that they're in aren't close enough essentially for certain people to get to. I don't know if you'd spoken to them at all about bringing more. I know that the call out here is for a car share space to exist in the building, which would be awesome. But I'm wondering if on car shares have, if maybe they could bring more cars?
Yeah, we've traded some emails about the regulations and they've taken a look at multiple drafts. And so the point value is what we concluded upon for for car share. And and I think that the text is what we concluded upon too. Yeah, it, the the, their like arrangements, agreements are are pretty interesting too, just because of the cost share that's involved. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure about what we could do to bring in more cars. I think that might be something on your end.
Yeah, so when Car Share Vermont was coming back to Winuski this time around, there had a lot of discussion about what would be a supportive population and it I guess it's performing all right in the two that we have now. So I think absent a large private developer with a significant user base that was incentivized somehow, I I think they've exhausted the public locations they could have. The other issue, of course, is that they have to pay for the vehicle and so they have to guarantee a certain amount of users. And so place, I don't know how they feel about placing a third. Again, the last I heard, they were doing all right. When they first started out, it was like, I don't know that they increased the users by a lot. It's like just people shifting from a different pod to our pods. So, yeah, that's that's the latest that I know. I'm not claiming that it's definitive though.
Thank you.
Well, I will say this, I have found this full update deep and hard to follow throughout the process on planning commission. But that I know from participating in those meetings, in that body, we have some really pro bike people and some really pro car people and that you've done a good job navigating and and they have all consent, like they are all on board with this. So I think from what I have seen, like this this meets that middle need of the goals that we have gives the incentive to the developers to make sure this doesn't like inhibit housing development while we do get more of this multimobile transportation amenities that we need. Is there any public comments or questions on this topic? So we have this on for discussion or approval?
To to move to public here, to move to hold a public hearing on this.
Oh, shoot, I wasn't looking at the cover sheet. Perfect. Okay. Shall we take that action and the three little things you can bring back as part of that?
Yeah.
Okay. So looking for a motion to introduce and set a public hearing on June sixteenth.
It's removed.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item C, also on for discussion and or approval, the emergency purchase request for security cameras for Cascade's parking garage.
Yes, so for the last few years, the stair walls of the current city owned, that's the Cascades, parking garage in Winuski Falls Way has attracted people to stay overnight and or use illegal drugs and or defecate and urinate and or leave trash or belongings. I do want to acknowledge that people who have passes to park in the garage and business leaders who have customers who could park in the garage have also indicated they feel the garage isn't safe to park in. I don't dispute that is how they feel. Today's request isn't actually about that concern and so the proposal does not address that concern either. We do have plans to suggest addressing that with lighting, as has been also recommended by business leaders, but it has not been a priority compared to other projects that must get done on a sooner timeline, especially the Main Street revitalization project and managing a team that now has one less manager in it. Uh, overseeing, which used to oversee the wastewater and water functions. So accordingly, today's request is about being able to manage a problem causing, causing behavior in the stair walls specifically. Which creates a health hazard for students living in Spinner Place and now a public safety issue for all users of the parking garage and around housing and retail. Efforts to date have included trying to connect individuals with social support through the city's community outreach program provided by the Howard Center. This has had limited impact because enough refuse, enough refuse and continue their behaviors in the stair walls. We have been paying specialty contractor on an as needed basis to clean up hazardous waste. In twenty eight months, we've paid over twenty six thousand dollars for sixteen cleanings. Directed and random patrols by the police department are temporarily effective as the people will generally leave when asked to do so by our officers. However, with the amount of other police work the department needs to do relative to our staffing levels, we cannot patrol there as often as or when needed necessarily. It is also not an effective use of our limited patrol resources as someone may or may not be in appropriately occupying stair walls when our officer is patrolling there. Whereas extensive hazardous waste can build up in sometimes just a day or two. We arranged for a walkthrough and quote for security cameras in the fall of twenty twenty four. Since then, we learned that multiple vendors could meet our specifications, which meant that by the city's purchasing policy, we needed to put the opportunity out for bid. Staff had had competing priorities, as I mentioned before, that delayed writing that request for bids. We didn't have data that stair wall activity was escalating, so staff did not prioritize getting the bid opportunity together. So what brings us to council today is that in April, staff discovered that some of the walls near the stair walls have been removed. And there is evidence that people using, are using wall cavity for refuge. This creates a fire risk because the open walls and damaged ceilings create open voids to the intended fire stopping of, in those areas. So this is now a risk to human safety. While we are, are getting the wall repaired, obviously we need to do something that will greatly decrease the likelihood that this will happen again as soon as possible. Uh, staff have recommended placing security cameras in the stair walls. Our dispatch staff monitor security cameras twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. This allows for just in time policing, which A reserves that policing resource for when needed. And B limits accumulations of waste and therefore costly contracted waste removal. I have determined that this constitutes an emergency under the city's purchasing policy. Emergency purchases do not require quotes or bids, but for transparency, emergency purchases are to be approved by council. Uh, we do have an estimate of about ninety thousand dollars. Does council have any questions? We do have the fire chief, public works director and police chief on, on, online for any questions that they might be able, be able to better answer than I can.
Elaine, the quote that's attached is for just over seventy thousand. What am I missing there?
Uh, John? R- Roucher?
So the seventy thousand dollar quote that you're seeing, it doesn't include the additional, um, hard piping for conduit. So that's an additional thirteen, like thirteen thousand dollars. And that's really to prevent, that was recommended for that vandalism. So it'd be without that, it just certainly lose telecom wire. Uh, and then there is an increase to allow for, you know, the quote's somewhat old at this point. And, you know, typically in any project, you're gonna run into a few things, you know, unknown during the installation. So speaking with the, the vendor, um, who, who actually did our previous camera installation in the parking garage. So we do have cameras, but they're on the parking decks. These would be very similar cameras, just in the stair walls. They, they recommended with the uh, increased pricing, just due to the age of that estimate, um, and any unknowns, ninety thousand dollars.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Did we? So ninety thousand dollars is obviously a lot of money. And not going to bid due to an emergency. Is there a particular, did, was there research done into this company over another company? And is that why they were picked? I'm wondering if staff kind of did research into pricing before picking this company. I agree that we need cameras. I struggle with the emergency need because I feel like it's something that's been brought up. At least since I've been on council. So I think there was time in those years for a bid. So again, I'm not saying I don't agree with it. I, I've seen the images of what happens in the stairwell and know of things that have happened there. So I completely understand it. I just wonder, want to make sure we have pursued options that are more affordable. And then I also, I see in the the write-up from Royal Group that they have five-year warranties. I was wondering what that includes. Cause I know some of the parking garages in Burlington, they have cameras, but they frequently get vandalized. So I'm worried that we put up a camera, it gets vandalized and then we have to spend another several thousand dollars, whatever it is per camera. So just want to make sure that if it doesn't cover something like that, we have a plan of how to either protect the cameras or what the cost may look like if we have to start replacing cameras due to vandalism. Those are the two things I have at top of mind.
John, can you take a step?
Yeah, I can answer a few of those. So going to the, that first question about the vendor and comparing pricing. So I would suspect even if we were to bid this project, this would probably be the vendor we would end up with. Mainly because this, they installed the initial system in the parking garage, including the server. So we would want a camera system that matches our existing units, the access camera system. The only reason we couldn't sole source Royal Group is because apparently there is one other vendor somewhere in Vermont that does sell these access cameras, um, but they didn't. These folks are the only bidders on the twenty eighteen, uh, camera project, I believe. So so I would suspect even if we were to bid this, we'd probably end up with Royal Group just because of the uh, the camera system we have currently. Uh, regarding the warranty item, so yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to look back on the the details of the warranty for the existing camera or for the, these cameras. I will say we have not had any vandalism on the existing cameras that we have in the garage, which are similar. Um, and we haven't had any sort of operational cost issues with those cameras. So luckily uh, there hasn't been vandalism to date. The the cameras would be placed, when we did the walkthrough, the cameras would be placed, they would be, it'd be pretty difficult to vandalize them. You'd have to work, you'd have to work for it to, uh, to get them to get within reach of them. And the one camera, one of the cameras that's on the, um, I believe the second level, that one's going to be more of an institutional type camera that's going to have a that one is within reach, but it'll have like a security film on it. So if it was like, you know, graffiti or spray painted, it'd be pulling a film off the, the, uh, the camera lens. So but yeah, I can take a look at the warranty info on, um, the warranty details for that quote.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that explanation.
There is also a requirement in the purchasing policy for emergency purchases. We do require the use of an existing vendor under the emergency purchasing. I don't believe there are any other camera vendors in our, our ledgers.
Thanks Angela.
I just, um, I see the perception from the folks that use the garage regularly as it being unsafe. I also don't think that surveillance solves social problems. Seeing people do vandalism and having our police force that is already spread really thin go down and report and scoop someone up to do what with them, right? What is their recourse here? We see people doing vandalism, we arrest them for a night, they go into the system where there's no room for more people. And then they end up back in the community worse off than they were before, when they might've had some belongings or might've had a phone or, you know? I just don't see this as a solution to the problem we're experiencing so much as we're going to watch the problem and then keep it circulating. That's all this to say, I'm not pers- like against the cameras again. I just don't know that they're going to do what we need done. If people are going to the bathroom in the, in the like stairwell, like what they need is a bathroom, not a camera, you know? If we want staff to feel safe cleaning and not expose them to bio hazards and needles and all that stuff, like cameras don't solve that. Like eyes on the problem isn't a solution to the problem and I just wanted to name that. Yeah. So that's, uh, that's my two cents on it. I think that this is sort of like a Band-Aid on a bullet hole. We're trying to isolate a systemic problem in one part of our small little town when this is countywide, this is statewide, this is countrywide, like people being displaced and using public spaces as private spaces because they don't have private spaces to go to. And particularly in Vermont, we know that folks are in this cycle of getting picked up and then released and then picked up and then released and it's not helping anyone, certainly not our PD, which again is spread really thin. So not anti-camera, but pro long-term solution, I think is my stance on this particular item.
So agree, this does not solve the problem, the bigger problem. It does solve one problem, which is, which will serve as a Band-Aid. Which is, and part of it is that we don't arrest people generally that are in the garage. We do have that option. But generally we just ask them to move and they have moved. And so our, the problem that we're solving. The problem that we're solving is that we displace them so they're not creating a safety hazard in the stair walls.
But now they're in our neighborhoods though. They're not in our parking garage. They're out in our neighborhoods and
So the bigger problem is also in council policy pregnant strategies, which is try to figure out how we can support solutions at the state level. We cannot solve that locally. We cannot solve it locally. We've been trying and obviously it's not working.
And do we invest a hundred thousand dollars in what we know probably isn't going to help that much? It's going to stop the vandalism. It's not, it'll stop the most major incidences of vandalism. It's not going to stop people peeing in corners in the parking garage, you know?
So what these folks need mostly is better mental, access to mental supports and for them to access that. We cannot solve that locally. We need state to get involved. We need the legislature to get involved. Uh, we need advocacy from all the people that are being affected. And yeah, so this, again, this solution will address this problem, which is not the root problem, but it will address this problem.
Realistically, it won't even stop the vandalism if they're coming after the vandalism has occurred.
So there is a buildup of, of issue, of, of waste that happens that we can put an earlier stop to. That's why it's effective because we're being monitored twenty-four seven. And that does help our police department because right now they have to go whenever and there may or may not be somebody there doing something problematic. Now we can just go when we know there's somebody there.
So now they're going when there's people that are just potentially sleeping and not doing anything wrong though.
Uh, if I could interject, I think the specific incident that we're solving for here is that some folks had time to dismantle an entire firewall in the building. If there was a security camera there, that could have been stopped. So this investment, while a significant amount of money right now would prevent us from having to spend larger sums of money to do repairs that could be stopped before they get out of control like that.
Potentially a fire that threatens the integrity of the parking garage.
Yeah. And I, I've said it more than once. I don't have any intention on voting no on this. I just felt the need to speak my perspective.
That's fair. I mean, I agree as Elaine did. It's a Band-Aid. But it is there for a certain particular part of the problem.
So I want to take your comments, um, just another step further. You astutely stated that what people need is a bathroom. What people need is housing. With ninety thousand dollars, wouldn't we be able to hire a staff that could stay and monitor the the, um, bus warming space so that people have access to a bathroom?
For one year and then we would not be, have any more money. This is a one-time expense, of staff versus ongoing.
And I think just in terms of budget management, I'm looking at the remaining unassigned balances. It looks like the pedestrian bridge repair may not be something that we will need to fund.
Potentially not. We don't know. The, the, um, the mill owner has not responded to our finding that it is not owned by the city. We're also in mediation on another matter. So we don't know what's going to come out of all that. So we took off the replacement. It's like, I feel like that's pretty unlikely at this point, but I left that on there as possible. I have no idea what's going to happen with that.
So I think there is the hypothetical where I do use the garage frequently. Many of my coworkers use the garage frequently. It has been, concerns have been ongoing for years. Um, I think that downtown businesses as well, attending monthly Tuesday safe, community safety meetings have expressed as much. I hear that the feedback is strategies and priorities. But much like a budget, you have to make adjustments depending on the inputs that you receive. So I would pose back to council, like, does it make sense to consider having a full-time staff down so that they can occupy and oversee the, the bus space that has been locked for a year?
Uh, longer than that.
Just this past week, I had a coworker say that one of the folks that would likely use a bathroom would benefit from having a, a porta potty. And it's, it, it's not solving the problem, but it gets at least a little bit closer to mitigating than cameras would.
So I would, uh, I would need to check with community outreach, but my suspicion, my guess is that some of those people who are repeatedly using the stair walls would still do so, even if we had that bathroom unlocked, because most of them have mental health challenges that are not being addressed adequately. So that would be an ongoing expense for a part of the problem, which may or may not mitigate the issue that we have now, uh, as what the parking or the stair walls being a safety and hazard, a safety issue and a health issue.
And I think additionally, something that's on the unassigned balances that we actually haven't talked about during the discussion is the fact that the elevators are still busted. So folks pretty much have to use the stair walls. It's a very frustrating space that we're in where we have reached the need to make a, a decision for emergency basis and I appreciate you hearing my thoughts and, and feedback and, um, and I appreciate the, uh, the acknowledgement of the challenges of trying to address all needs in the community. I do just want to reiterate, putting, posing back to council, like just working smarter, I guess.
I agree with Elaine. I don't think that bathroom being publicly accessible would mitigate as much of what's happening in the garage. Certainly not if people are trying to live in the walls. That's not going to help. I wouldn't want to commit us to a ongoing full-time staff expense when this one-time cost would probably address a larger portion of the current issue.
I think it's wild that we're talking about people that are so desperate that they're living inside of walls and we're talking about buying cameras. I'm just going to say that, like, that is surveillance is a tool of the fascist. I don't think that cameras help anyone's mental health. I don't think that they actually make people safer. I think they make people temporarily feel safer. And it makes the people that are being watched with the intent of controlling them and altering their behavior really unsafe. We have an exceptional police department in Winuski. I acknowledge that. I respect our, our guys and gals and also those interactions are never fun for either party. And again, the level of desperation to And again, the level of desperation to rip into a wall to live in it. Versus like, we're, it just, I, I'm having a major level of dissonance right now with this whole conversation.
You are completely right to have that and to name that, and we need state-level solutions, because the level of. Of unmet need in Winuski, in Brattleboro, in Bretland, in St. Johnsbury, in Newport is. Beyond any of our municipalities. We need more state investment in social services, we need to think about, uh. What we do with people who refuse services over and over and over again to their own detriment and to everyone else's detriment. It is a tough conversation and, yeah, this is, this is like this piece of, of this much of a problem, acknowledged.
And I think we're going in the wrong direction. If this is our, this is our big idea with, you know, people that are. Like doing thousands of dollars in damage to city property. I think we are fighting a ve- very quickly losing that battle. And I'll close my comments on this item, but, yeah.
I have some follow-up questions that are kind of related but slightly off property. We have, we're building a new garage, is the scope for that garage?
There are no stairwells in that one.
Does the scope for that include cameras?
You're muted.
Thanks, uh, yes, that will also have cameras, it will not. Uh, as Elaine mentioned, it's not gonna have the stairwell, stairwells like, um, our existing garage does and. Our existing garage, um, on the, you know, on the DPW side, there's. There's a lot of, um. Little nooks and crannies in this existing garage that make it, um, pretty difficult, especially in this stairwell area. Um, and we, that was one of the big design elements that we were pretty strong, were very clear about. Uh, during the new garage, uh, design is that we wanted to make sure that there was. More, less, less spaces like that, that could be a problem in the future, so. But yeah, it will have, it will have cameras.
Thanks for answering the question. Any questions from members of the public? I'm not hearing additional questions or concerns, I also don't know where this is headed. But I wonder if someone wants to make a motion to approve the emergency purchase request for security cameras.
So moved.
It was motion by Thomas. I will second it. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Alright, the motion fails, we won't be solving this problem at all this evening. Thank you.
Can I? Can I ask council for some direction on what we're supposed to do? And you don't, obviously you don't have to answer today, but a big question that we haven't solved in five years.
I mean, can we? From what I'm hearing from folks, maybe they, we need to see. The cost of an attendant for the waiting room slash bathroom. Bren, I think you mentioned one person, but it's a twenty-four hour problem, so I don't think one person would probably be enough. Also concerns about housing. I know the shelters cost several million dollars a year, but maybe that's something we need to see to fix the. Alleviate the cons- the issue that is there. I'm not saying these are things we can, that are easy or can be done, but just the concerns that were raised, housing, the bathroom. Being the solutions. I know that like, you know, we planning, we just reviewed a document or we tried to incentivize housing, but that doesn't fix the situation for folks who are in. That place. No matter, no matter how cheap we can make housing, they're not able to afford it, so.
I wonder how much rather than, um, someone on staff. If there's an opportunity to see what it would cost for, um. I don't know, like some of the street attendants that, um, are posted to Church Street to provide. Some like additional supports, they're non, they're not police enforcement, but I don't know how you'd feel about that, Charlie.
We've, we've already heard that the folks that are causing these issues are refusing services from community outreach. So how would this be different?
I think that if those folks have found a place to land for the night. Asking them to move along and not knowing where they end up puts more people at risk than it keeps safe. From my perspective. I worked for COTS for three years, I've worked with people in all sorts of states from crisis to full blown stability. And, um. I think that the, I can't speak for this particular individuals that are causing the problems in our garage, I'm sure there's not a, a. Dialed-in cast of characters, I'm sure it's, there's a myriad and, and a rotation and, and cycles of people. Probably on an annual basis that come up and down from warmer places, um, as the seasons change. I, the reason for my no vote tonight is that I need to know. Where those folks move along to, and I get it's, it's a state issue, yes, it's, it's an everywhere issue, but. This is our conversation about our town and folks that we're going to affect, where are they gonna go? Are they gonna be walking down Main Street, like, just haunting the city, like, what, what happens to these folks? Put them on camera, but what are you gonna do with them once they're on camera? That's my, that's my very reasonable question. And with a, with, with, uh, with an answer to that, I might be feel more comfortable spending this money on something that I genuinely don't believe in as a person.
Ju- uh, Justin, do you have any comments? Justin Hezinga, are you still there? If you are, you're muted.
And just to further that, is, is it worth our officer's time, if, if it is the case and someone suggests sleeping, right, like? Is it?
I don't think we're talking about the problem being people sleeping.
Yeah, but if the, if you're, if we're some, sending someone out no matter what a person's doing, which is what, if we're, if we're gonna set a rule. Which is you can't be in there if you're not walking up and down the stairs, right?
That's not what I've heard this evening or from this memo, what I've heard is we send somebody when we see.
So only, only property damage, is that, so. That was not clearly laid out to me, nowhere does it say, in the case of property damage. We will send out an officer if it's caught on camera, you know, that's not in the language.
It also doesn't say we're sending somebody every time we see a person.
Well, then maybe it should be clearer, Christine.
Let's, uh, figure out what we've been doing and what we're comfortable imposing as guidelines, Justin?
Yeah, sorry, uh, I just wanna start off by saying I don't have a perfect answer for this. Um, the thought behind the cameras is that we could go down there and interact with somebody. Before anything significant happened. You know, what, what happens after we in- interact with them? I don't know, we have let people stay in the stairwells when they're, um. You know, quote-unquote following the rules, when there, when there's not vandalism, when there's. Not substance abuse issues, um, but again, that's an issue for the fire department, having people stay in the stairwells overnight, and I'll let the fire chief. Um, talk, talk to that. But the general point of, of the cameras was to try to stop the behavior before it started with early interaction.
So you would be sending an officer out when there's someone hanging out in the stairwell and not moving through, using it as. Egress up or down, that's what it sounds like to me. If someone's sitting on the stairs or. You know, just hanging out there, like, is there a timeline on, limit on, on this, right? If we're gonna put in cameras and use them as a, a regulatory tool. We should just be very clear on how we're gonna use them.
Yeah, I certainly think that there's gonna be factors to it as far as timing of the day, how long people have been in there, what type, what type of. Behavior we're observing, um, I don't think there's gonna be a cookie cutter response to many of the mental health challenges that we respond to.
John, do you have any, um, Audi, do you have additional thoughts on general safety?
Yeah, certainly, um, you know, there's lots of challenges in this and I. Appreciate the larger conversation, you know, there's a lot bigger problems to solve here, obviously, but. Um, you know, the egress stairwells there are shared with the residential wraparound building there. Um, so when there's mattresses, when they're cooking in the stairwells. When they're breaching the building envelope. Um, so now we have exposed parts of the structure that have no fire protection. Um, that's of great risk to the hundreds that live in those wraparound, um, residential units. It's a, a huge risk to your, um, one of your biggest city assets being a steel building. Um, and it is a huge, um, risk to our staff. And, you know, I do feel cameras would help us mitigate, um. The risk factors, it's never intended to solve this much larger, um, problem. I, I have, I am extremely uneasy, um, that. You know, we're not taking steps to help mitigate some of the risk. Um, you know, the city, you know, prior to most of you on council, um, you know, we had a dedicated downtown staff. Member that tried to manage the bus stop in the bathrooms. And it turned into limited hours. And we were still forcing the bathroom door even when the space was monitored. Um, so it's an extremely difficult, um. Thing to do. You, if we do that again, we're, I mean, we, we did that historically. And the decision, the risks were so high, the, the, the bathroom, the bus stop area was locked. Um, due to public safety concerns.
Do we have any additional guidance for staff?
Thomas seemed to be the only one that you'd allow to speak, so why don't we go with what he said?
Nobody was saying anything, so I tried to summarize, I don't think that I was the only one she allowed to speak.
I would so much sooner see us. I'm, I'm much more aligned with like Bren's thought, whether it's like a parking attendant or a garage attendant that works the hours that. It is most perilous to be in the garage. Not necessarily like keeping the bathroom in the bus waiting area open, um, but. There are a lot of parking garages in a lot of cities that have attendants that patrol, they're unarmed, they have a radio, this is how people keep their. Parking areas, warehouses, lots, yards, safe, um. I just am. Once we start putting cameras places as a solution, we're gonna start putting cameras everywhere as a solution, it's a very slippery slope. And again, I, I don't see it having. I understand the public safety risk as identified by Chief Audi. I also hear Chief Uzenga's concerns, um, and I don't think, I, I would much rather see a human answer to the human problem. Than defer to surveillance.
I'd be curious if staff have thoughts?
I'd rather spend the money that way, I guess, rather, if we're, if we're gonna spend ninety K, I'd rather have. Two part-time people at forty-five a year or however it breaks down, um, it just makes way more sense to me. Instead of having the cops come out and talk to somebody, there's somebody already there that can be like, move along, you know, why are we? I, yeah.
The reason why we've resorted to that is because community, when community outreach goes, there's no impact or very limited impact. It, the only thing that has been effective is if it's a uniformed officer. Figuring out what's going on, and then if it's really problematic, telling them that they gotta go. And again, that is not solving the bigger problem or helping this person, but it is mitigating the safety and hazard issue. That they are creating in the stairwell for these hundreds of other people that are in, in that area.
Sure, and all of that, all of that is addressed by us having a designated individual whose job it is to monitor. The parking garage.
It, I don't think it would, because that person does not have the authority of a uniformed officer.
Put them in a uniform, they don't have to be an officer, if the officers aren't doing anything other than saying, go. I, I just don't, I don't, I don't think that we have the same perception on these communications, but, yeah.
I have a clarifying question about, um, our financial policies. Based on my experience with, uh, Chindin Sol Waste District, there is allotment, um, a financial dollar amount that's. Allowed by the executive director to make without board approval, and then I think there might be additional. Oversight that allows the chair, um, or an executive, like, group to make a decision, so. I don't know if our policy is allowed for that.
We have a, a sole source pro- process that this doesn't meet because there's another vendor.
Right, I think it was, um, just in terms of the approval authority of dollar amount, like, if there was, rather than the sole source, like, an RFP. Requirements, if there was, since this is an emergency status and since it does state. That we have to go with an existing vendor, does that language also go so far to say what's. Allowed to be approved by the city manager without council?
That's an existing policy, it's forty thousand dollars.
Is there anything that council would be willing to consider? Is there a scenario under which council would reconsider the same request? Other data on. On whatever scenario or what isn't, isn't been found effective elsewhere, et cetera.
Really just guidelines on how this footage surveillance would be used, right, like? We have a wide range of behaviors that are going to be observed on these cameras, some of which it sounds like need to be. Enforced against and some of which don't, it gets very murky. It potentially opens the city up to liability depending on what happens in those stairwells on those cameras. Um, and the way that we handle them on a case-by-case basis. I, I just, we gotta be really sure about how we wanna use this tool if we take on a tool that is so powerful.
Justin, you have thoughts about, uh, feasibility of developing such guidelines? If we can actually meet.
Yeah, that's something that we can work on and I can't tell you now, um, you, you know. The purpose of these cameras is not enforcement purpose in a- a- any regard. It's, it's more for stopping a problem before it starts and then also trying to connect people. And to services sooner, um, and, and I do understand what you're saying and. And I do see that it is a little bit of kicking the can down the road, but at least it stops the problem even for. The night until we can regroup the next day and maybe take another shot at connecting people with services. This is not an enforcement tool, this is a support tool from, from our side of things.
Maybe we could bring community outreach in with, uh, PD next time to talk more, like, we could work on some guidelines and then. walk you through some scenarios.
I'd be more than happy to hear this item again at another meeting, um, with more information from the folks that are reliant on the data that will be collected by these cameras. Um, I don't want to push off the safety issue, that's not my goal here. Um, I don't want people to not have a point of egress getting out of that massive apartment building. I don't want that. Um, I hear the issues with the mattresses and the cooking and also we want to be very clear about how we're going to use this tool if we're going to start employing this tool. And I would feel a lot more comfortable changing my stance about the investment if I knew more details about the function of that investment, if that makes any sense.
And I just wanted to add one more thing if I could on, on the safety of the people in there. It's also for the safety of the people that are using the stairwell. We've seen people sleeping in there, we've seen people using heaters in there with carbon dioxide being spewed into it. We've also seen a significant amount of drug use in there and, um, you know, there, there potentially could be an overdose in there that we aren't aware of or we don't see until somebody unfortunately finds that person. So to be able to see this happening in real time and to get services down there in real time, I think is a very big preventative measure.
I agree with Charlie. Um, I, as a frequent user of the garage, that my workplace relies on use of the garage, I, I want to make very intentional decisions that, um, make the most sense, um, for resolving systemic issues.
Fair points. Well, um, yeah, I, uh, that's the word I'm looking for. I would like to have that opportunity to present that information with staff and our partners at Community Outreach and Power Sonic. And I'll just mention that, um, it might be months before, if there is an approval by council, there, it might be months before they get installed, so we are delaying the solution, even this Band-Aid.
Thank you. Thank you for responding to questions and concerns, um, and for putting all this together from staff and for continuing to try to address what is happening over there. We'll move on to item D, the strategic vision goal update for safe, healthy, connected people.
All right, I think chiefs are here as well, but, um, I can just give a quick preamble to say, you know, generally here, I think things are moving ahead, um, generally well on the places that it's not, as we can see upfront, are areas where we've, we've been slowed by things that were sort of predictable or in the case of recruitment of staff sort of outside of our control to a degree, so, um, happy to answer any specific questions, but, um, yeah, overall, I think positive, positive results and movement this quarter.
Um, folks were just this weekend asking about plans for the library, um, and timing of project completion. It sounds like that may not even begin until next winter, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we had initially been pulling for a false start, um, and due to a few reasons, one being, um, some ongoing lingering work around the environmental mitigation piece, um, some concerns about some funding delays at the federal level, uh, and a pretty big discrepancy in between the initial, uh, budget for the project and the actual, um, construction estimate that came through. There's just some fundraising gaps that we're, we're still trying to fill. So we're going to push to, uh, a hopeful start date in January of 2026, um, which is a little bit of a delay from where we've been, but, um, that's the, that's the date we're holding and planning around right now and, um, you know, beginning to start to have conversations about relocation of the library and, and things of that nature. So I think we're, it feels like we're closer to holding that date than we've been with some of these previous, uh, benchmark dates in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ray.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for these updates. Again, no surprises. All right, we are moving on to section eight. Uh, an executive session has been warned pursuant to Vermont State Statute Section 313, which exempts from public inspection contracts. I am looking for a motion to move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding this item would clearly place the city as a substantial disadvantage because the city risks disclosing its negotiation strategy if it discusses this contract in public.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Charlie, second by Bren. Seeking a second motion to move that we enter into executive session to discuss this item under the provisions of Title I, Section 313A1A of the Vermont statutes, inviting, uh, Bill Niket, Doug Nettie, Angela Alderi, Elaine Wong, John Rousher, and Bob DePalma.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are going to move into an executive session. Okay, we are on regular item nine A, discussion approval, the amendment agreement with Nettie Real Estate. I am seeking a motion to approve the omnibus amendment agreement with Nettie Real Estate as presented and authorize the city manager to execute it.
So moved.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bren, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.